And oversee the CU in Terre Haute 2025 Community Plan. The Community Plan aligns the public and private sectors to advance initiatives and important initiatives important for retention and attraction of the population and job growth. The six pillars from the foundation of the Community Plan, including tourism, quality of life, economic development, talent attraction or retention, infrastructure and healthy wellness. Each of those pillars include a task force that is working on objectives specific to that focus area. Many of the items that the commissioners will speak about today are not necessarily task force objectives and projects, but the work the county is doing aligns with the pillars of the Community Plan. As we go through the slide, you will see markers on the bottom left-hand corner of the screen that highlight which pillar the topic touches on. Today's format will consist of each commissioner speaking on about five topics for a total of around 15 minutes each. We'll have a timer running for each slide to stay on time. So if we run past the three minutes for a topic, we'll move on to the next one. And then there will be about 10 minutes for Q and A at the end of the presentations. So now I would like to introduce each of our three commissioners. Chris Schweitzer was elected as District Two Commissioner in 2020. He spent 12 years in small business before entering politics. Prior to running for Commissioner, Chris served two years on the Vigo County Council. He is currently the Vice President of the West Central District of the Indiana Association of County Commissioners, a board member of the Terre Haute Chamber of Commerce, Vigo County Capital Improvement Board, and the Vigo County Solid Waste Management District, along with being an executive member of the Terre Haute Economic Development Corporation. Chris is married, well, with wife Jennifer, and has two children, Emma and Jet. Thank you, Chris, for being here. Brendan Kearns is the District One Commissioner and was elected in 2018. He, along with his wife Sarah, who happens to be the COO of the Wabash Valley Health Center, and daughter Mia, love to travel the country and see what other communities are doing that could be brought here to Vigo County. Before being elected Commissioner, Brendan served as a county council member. True to his passion for the Wabash River, trails and the environment, he also worked for the Indiana Department of Natural Resources, advancing the Healthy Rivers Initiative. In addition, Brendan is currently the President of the Wabash River Heritage Border Commission. Thank you, Brendan, for being here. And lastly, Mike Morris is the District Three Commissioner for Vigo County, elected in 2020. He previously served as the Vigo County Council President. He is also an avid runner and is currently President of the Wabash Valley Road Runners Club. He just became a national champion, actually placing first in his age category in the USA Triathlon Multi-City National Championship. Mike is also the owner of the Morris Trucking Corporation, a fourth-generation family-owned trucking company since 1925. So thank you, Mike, for being here as well. But now I will give the floor to Chris Schweitzer to begin the presentation.
Good morning, everybody. Thanks for coming. This is going to turn out for a first event. So I can remember after the State of the City address, Mayor Bennett, Chris immediately texted me and said, hey, you guys want to do this? And I said, well, we all like to talk, if you know it, so we'll talk as much as we can. But after Joe, if I get excited, I get on my tippy toes. Councilman Travis Morris called me on my tippy toes at Convention Center and sent it around. So we'll get started here. Capital Improvement Plan is something the county is getting ready to engage in. We're actually meeting with Jason somewhere from Baker Tilly next Friday. Capital, you know, capital planning wise and importance. First of all, why we select Baker Tilly? The city of Terre Haute has also selected Baker Tilly, and they've done a fantastic job working together, coming up with a capital improvement plan three to five years out. So, you know, they're one of the 15 largest accounting and advisory firms in the U.S. They, you know, they do financial and single audits, municipal advisory services, debt management, accounting services, and much more. The needs of the county, you know, we're looking for a master template for new organizational framework focused on resource alignment. So all the resources the county has, how can we bring those together and make everything more efficient? New definitions of roles and responsibilities. We actually contracted Baker Tilly last year. They're doing a compensation study for county employees now to see how we match up with counties across the state similar to our size. Why is long-term financial planning important? Of course, it provides a roadmap for future projects and the best benefit of taxpayer dollars and identifies areas of opportunity and risk. Let's go long-term financial planning. Where have we been? Where have we been as a county? What can we do better? Where are we now? What are we doing now that's efficient? Or what are we doing now that's probably not the best practices? That's several different things. And where do we want to go in the community? You know, all three commissioners are outdoorsmen. We like to be outside. I think, you know, outdoors is important in Vigo County. We have a lot of parks, especially in Vigo County. The city of Terre Haute has a lot of parks. We want to be an outdoor community, so that's where we like to go. Deliverables of long-term financial planning, executive summary, observations, recommendations, and potential solutions. And it will present us results in an easy way for us to understand and explain to the community so everybody can get on board. And we'll talk about the city and county relationship. I want to go first when we go to the bottom there. Getting through the pandemic, the city of Terre Haute and Commissioner Kearns at the time with Judy and Brad Anderson did the Power of You campaign to get us through the camp or the pandemic. We're one of RJL Solutions, and we really came together to push our community forward through the pandemic. We know that affected businesses, people individually, I think we did a great job of guiding ourselves through the pandemic. Next, Freddie Graham. Not only working locally together, but collaboratively throughout the region. RJL had a good help tremendously with that. Local Development Agreement with Casino, which I'll touch on later. We worked, we had several meetings with Churchill Downs, Terre Mayor Duke Bennett, Chamber of Commerce, working together to come to a good agreement, a good board for the local development agreement. American Rescue Plan Funds. Gosh, we've had so many rule changes, interim rule changes. Now we're at a final rule with American Rescue Plan Funds. Commissioner Kearns and Morris gave me the opportunity to sit down with our county council members, along with city council members with Mayor Duke Bennett. And we went over several ideas we had and we do have, and we hope to announce those pretty soon. Next, I, Josh. Okay, our new jail. As frustrating as it is, we got to build a new jail. Federal judge told us we had to do so. Our old jail is an absolute disaster. Our new jail's 504 beds, has five video courtrooms with two additional rooms for additional cameras and video court. We have a lot of classroom space in there, and we have additional areas for local recovery services. So, you know, one of the goals is, along with the central, is to get some of our local groups in there to really help these folks, because a lot of people, a lot of people that are spending time in jail, they're usually not hardcore criminals or just addicted to something or have something going on in their brain, and they need help immediately. So the goal is to meet those people right there at that point and get them to help. The most important thing that we can do as a county is maintain this jail. If we do not maintain this jail in the last 10 years, it will be a huge mistake on behalf of the taxpayers and on behalf of the commissioners. I mean, this is important. We're adding more money to contractual services because a lot of the stuff in the jail, the state yard, computer program, HVAC systems, is crazy expensive, and we want to make sure this building lasts for several years. Tourism. Who would believe that Vigo County and Terre Haute is such a tourism destination? It really is. West Terre Haute, Terre Haute, Vigo County. Game way to the east. I mean, if you're traveling from the west, you have to come through Terre Haute Interstate 70 to head towards Indy, Cincinnati, all those areas. So the NKEPERS tax rate has grown from 2% to 8% over the past 41 years. So that 8% is how much somebody pays when they spend a night at a hotel in Vigo County. 2021 NKEPERS tax collections were $2.4 million. That has consistently gone up over the past 41 years, except for 2020, 2019 or 2020, which we were in the middle of a pandemic. Facts about tourism. It is a $30 million a year industry, cross-country course, robotics, all kinds of things. Rose Home and Indiana State University, IP Tech, St. Mary in the Woods, all help with tourism, bringing families here. We have approximately 1,900 hotel rooms. We need more. The Convention Center needs more hotel rooms. We're having problems, not having problems, but we need to get to a certain point where we can have 1,000 people at Convention Center, and there's 1,000 hotel rooms downtown for them to stay. So hopefully, we have a project coming soon with Mr. Tim Dora on getting two additional hotels downtown. Tourism, the industry employs about 3,000 people globally here in Vigo County, which is another really cool statistic. Convention Center is a fantastic new asset, which I will also touch on later. Now, I'd like to introduce to you, Vigo County Commissioner Brendan Kearns.
So Mike and I, as Chris was going over the accomplishments, all I was doing was stressing us out because we realized how much more work we have to do over there. So if you saw me pulling what hair I have left out, that's what that was about. And Chris, and where'd you go?
I'm over here.
So Chris, the reason why I did the first annual thing, does everybody understand that? There's no such thing as first annual, right? Let's all say it together. There's no such thing as first annual. If you want to guarantee that you'll never have a second event, what do you call it? The first annual.
Maybe that's what I was trying to do.
Yeah. This is it. Thank you for the inaugural, very first that it has ever happened. Are mine queued up there, Josh? So making another quick thought up there. When I came in as Commissioner, it was kind of a sore time. We got hit with a malware attack. Russian hackers got into our system, shut us down. Anybody recall that? Cost the county over a million dollars, if you can believe that. Had file in computers, had to buy a new HVAC control system for the courthouse because the virus that got in there, they pulled, they basically destroyed it. We couldn't buy new parts. It's amazing what kind of disruption. Then COVID hits. And so as county officials, we had to keep county running. So you had to keep county running while closing what? The county. We developed new programs with that now we're using that we're making these more efficient. Larry Robbins, our engineers here, we're now doing committee online. We're in a beta phase, but because of COVID, we amped up our goals of having most of our services online because COVID was a motion government order close. We got it in motion. So not saying some great things came out of COVID, but some good things came out of it. And we're doing that while building a jail and convention center. So that's my digression. Paving projects, your drive here, how was it? Were the roads good? You have fresh pavement right out here. Isn't that neat? How much pavement costs us nowadays? 90, how much, Dan? 90 what? $7,000 a mile. Larry, is that right? Is that the number we read yesterday? When I started off this little over three years ago, it was $71,000 a mile. This is the part where you're supposed to go, oh. So when you do 10 miles of paving at 71,000, and now those same 10 miles that we predicted for 2022 is now 91,000 miles, we have to work together to figure out what we're going to make cuts. But what we have done is we've invested in machinery to fill potholes better, to do sealing, sealing, not sealing, to seal the cracks. So we are investing within ourselves to help them save as we can. So the total last three years in Vigo County, we paved 182 miles, paved and approved 182 miles. That's a lot. Does anybody want to guess how many miles of roads that we maintain in Vigo County? Or does it say it up there? Doesn't say it, does it? About 830. So I know about half of you here go to St. George Island, Florida for spring break, right? That's 807 miles when you hit the T before you take a ride to go to the island. That pisses you in perspective. That drive from Terre Haute to St. George Island, Florida, is about how many miles that we have? And about 150 of those miles are gravel roads, and most of those roads will stay gravel. East walls, for those of you that go out, east walls into the cross-country place, that road will always be gravel because of the way the base is. If we put asphalt on it today, right John, it'll crumble. Is that fair enough? Yeah, okay. I'm taking too long already. So I've got 45 minutes, all right? For 2022, we have 22 miles scheduled to improve. So a lot of our roads are funded by property taxes, right? No, not a single cent. And Chris, Mike, and I get the same message all the time. You need to pave our roads. Our subdivision pays the most in property taxes around, and our response is usually, the school corporation thanks you, but the roads are covered by gas taxes. And the state picked up and helped all counties by putting together a community crossings program. That's a 50-50 match. So if we have a million-dollar project, Paper Town Road, for example, to pave that was about $200,000. Community crossings gave us an extra $200,000, 50-50. Larry, you give me a look, was that a community crossings project? Just say, yeah. So, yeah, we good? Cool. So we budget for that. We solicit the grants with hopes of getting a 50-50 match, which makes our goal a lot further. How do we pick roads? Anybody want to guess? Jason, you want to have or tell us how we pick roads? Dark board? Depends on which Commissioner lives on that road. I was told not to tell that joke, but realistically, I learned this because I talked to paving crew recently on Hasselberger Road, our favorite road, right Mike? And I was so happy, I went up to the guy and I said, I'm glad you're paving this. And he said, why? I said, because this is great. He goes, you live on this road, don't you? And I said, no, because we're a Commissioner. We always pave the Commissioner roads. He was from Enroe County. I just wanted to let everybody know. Let's go to redevelopment. Oh, only women left?
Oh, no.
I haven't been for 14 minutes. Redevelopment, let's hit that. We have 14 operating companies in our industrial park. Our industrial park that the commissioners own through redevelopment is down south, south, near the Solomon Line. We have 14 companies in there right now. There's about 1,500 jobs in the industrial park today. Steel Dynamics has an annual payroll of about $21 million. So we tried drilling that down. How are those people living in Vigo County? We don't have that info, but still, you know, even if people that live in Solomon County, which a lot of people that work in industrial park do because logistically it makes sense, they're spending money within Vigo County. Advix is our largest tenant with a range between 690 employees. Steve Wood shared with me a couple of days ago that he thinks there's about 650 employees there right now. So our industrial park is incredibly important to us. We have 350 acres available right now and about $700. And, okay, so there's two industrial parks. We have the industrial park one, that's the area that we know of as the industrial park, the nice big concrete road where the businesses are. Industrial Park Two is a former Pfizer property. There's 700 acres there. We have one 88,000 square foot spec building that's available. We farm about 800 acres of those properties. We just recently opened up Ruble Park. Everybody familiar with that? Built by your property. What a home run. And thinking about how this plays into the industrial park, right now, a lot of people want to go out on their lunch break for mental health breaks, where it used to be the smoke break, a lot of people don't smoke. So they're going out for their half hour, 45 minutes, or hour, and they want to go out and walk. Now they've got a great place to park their car, and they can walk a wonderful trail, one of many trails within Ruble Park, sit them over, look clear of their head, and go back to work. So we talk about our parks, you know, those are things that we think about. I took a mental health break yesterday, right down the road at the end of Tucker, where we have wetlands, Endon Wetlands. I just needed to stop, watch wildlife for about 10 minutes to reset, and it's a cool place to do that. Public ground is safe, and it's adjacent to the rail line that we're all working extremely hard on to turn into a rails and trails project, which I hope all of you are familiar with that. Our big thing about our industrial park is utilities. I can impress you with numbers, but when you get down to it, we have everything needed for a big company. Needs a lot of power, a lot of water, and a lot of waste to get rid of their waste. We have that, whereas a lot of communities don't have that. They'll promise to work on the infrastructure, or infrastructure's already there, and we also have rail, too. So we are true shovel-ready in our industrial park, which sets us aside from many others that we would be competing with. We turn the river. What a cool project. Art spaces, one of the greatest things that came out, I think, if I'm wrong, tell me, was that the Terre Haute Tomorrow Plan from maybe 10, 15 years ago? Does that sound right? Some of you in here are probably involved with it. Mary Kramer stepped up. She definitely, she keeps Mike, Chris, and I aligned for sure. She came to Brad, Judy, and I about this project, and basically what they wanted to do was take the space in between the courthouse and City Hall and put a fountain there. And I said, well, what kind of fountain? They said it's going to be a mock-up of the river. I said, I meant, you know, do whatever you want, which I probably shouldn't have said that because she did. And she came to Mike and Chris and I many times, they pay, we need 10,000 more for this, 10,000 more for that. We would go to Larry. We would all get stressed out, and ultimately, Mary got what she wanted, didn't she, guys? And as we've walked through this campus, if you guys haven't had a chance to be there, it is phenomenal. Our courthouse is our treasure of the county. Can anybody, I'm going to do a contest. I'm going to give somebody something really deep. Who can tell me when the courthouse was officially dedicated? What year? Just throw something out.
1834.
Okay, no. What?
1888.
You said 1888, Brendan? Okay, I'm going to give you something. Is that time to give him something?
Oh.
This is the architectural rendering, maybe, I think, 1870, 1884 of the courthouse. Bruce Allen, our surveyor, found the blueprints of the original courthouse a while back, and we've made prints. So we're going to give Brandon howl of one of these very rare prints. It's only rare because it's permanent. So if you get a chance, look at this, and you'll see some pretty amazing things. That's a pretty good award for Brandon.
Yeah, that was pretty impressive.
Isn't this fun, kids? So we partnered with the city because we, the county owns most of the land, the city has some. There's a 100-year agreement for a dollar or something like that that went back years ago. We've lost the original paperwork, so we just said, let's just work together and make it work. So Art Spaces has a dedication May 17th. I hope everybody here could be there to attend. I think about the courthouse, doing some research recently, did you know it almost wasn't built? So they went to a referendum. City council at the time controlled everything. So they said, hey, let's put this to vote. What did the community do? Voting against building a courthouse. 1874. They said, no, we're not going to do it. So people calmed down, they got smart. They said, you know what? We need to build a courthouse. Just imagine if that thing wasn't built. What would our logo be? Anyone want to guess that one? No? I'm going to lose it. Yeah, I recognize that. So, okay, what's next, Josh? Oh, love the shooting. So Josh said, hey, send us some pictures. And I said, hey, okay, I've got a couple of pictures of that area. The main thing is we're talking about is a Dewey Point Connector. It's still owned by Endon. It's not turned over to commissioners. When it is turned over to commissioners, we're going to name it something, right, guys? Okay, but we're not going to tell them now, right? No, okay. What we're doing to see is which one of us picks a bucket first. Too soon? Because that's what happens. So I, can I walk away from this? Can you see what's in the photo? What do you see? You see little dots that are far away. One, two, three, four, five, five eagles right there, the courthouse. I took this photo from Dewey Point where the nice overlook is. Have you guys been there? There's two spotting spots that we put out there so you can sit there and look. And that cool five eagles, that was probably six years ago I shot that. August 16th last year, we counted over 100 bald eagles from the walkway. So now we have a walkway that you can walk along, US 140, 150, what do we call it? 40, 50 National Road. The name changes weekly, right? We have a V, we end up today, one, they're going to change the name against the X. But now people can walk along the wetlands, stop and see eagles. So at this overlook, we counted almost 100 bald eagles. Isn't that incredible? So what's more exciting, the eagles or the walkway? I don't know. But the walkway was something that when it was pitched, all three of us were involved in some form. Over 100 people were involved in this project. People were complaining about it. And Chris, those people that were complaining and yelling at you online, what are they now saying? Well, they're walking across the walkway. They love it. They love it. So I think it's good for us to remember that when we pitch ideas, when we work hard for these quality life projects, and we've got those people that say, no, it's a bad idea, it's not going to prevent, or it's not going to help us, it's not economic development. The problem is those five people that are very loud, we pay attention to them versus the hundreds of people that are very quiet. Can we all relate to that in some form? So when we look at these big projects that we have, these big projects that we're looking at, don't let that one or two people bring us all down. We've got to keep moving forward. This is more of a speech for me than anything, because I think all three of us right now are struggling. Is that fair? Okay. Let's go to something else. Are we good with this? Housing development, another map. So I've done two studies. I've got our building inspection department next to head. Show me where homes are being built based off the permits that are being filed. So this is the most recent study I did, April to April. Let me see where key things are shown. This is county homes, okay? These dots show you where homes are being built. What we're seeing is, in Chris's district, there's strength right now, the northeast corner of the county. Why do you think people would be interested in building homes in that area? Interaction, I throw it out there. Did I say northeast? That's a difference. Direction is flexible. Northeast, where I live, is the worst. The northwest is the strongest, the ocean area. Where are people working nowadays? Paris, Illinois. When Sony throttled down, a lot of the Sony employees went to North American Life. The joke in that world is that they call Sony, or North American Life, Sony West. So you still have people living in Vigo County, but they're processing a lot, they're going to healthcare over there, to baby fashion facilities at Pivore going to. Christie, you see it, wherever you live in, right, that you come to Terre Haute, you're seeing people that are building on that northwest corner. The southern part, or this area, this is where I live, you're not seeing much here. You have a lot of ground, but it's former mine ground, it's not ideal to build. You're going to see some strength in the Black Hawk Lewis area because we're putting some money into infrastructure there. So this is good data for us. When we look at where we're investing your dollars to pay, it doesn't make sense for us to put a whole lot of money in the area where people aren't building. Because what happens is people start building in areas with rough roads, and then they demand to us because they're property taxpayers that we put in the roads for them. Isn't that interesting? So this whole Commissioner job, it's not as easy as it looks, but the three of us actually do pay attention to growth, to trends before we make our decisions. We work with our engineer, we work with our departments so that we do make sure that we invest where we need to within the county. Here's something that came up in discussions about housing. Most of our homes were built during the baby boomer era, right? Think about that, except for where we are right now. Gen Xers didn't really build homes. Who need homes right now? Is it our parents? Is it us? No, it's millennials. So millennials want new homes. Are new homes, Brandon, easy to find right now as a Realtor? No, they're not out there. If I were to go to a developer, a home builder, and say, I need to build a home, I need a 2,000 square foot home, I'm going to expect to pay about how much? 260? Maybe? They're not affordable. All of us in here know of some recent ventures where we've tried to get companies to come here, but the number one issue was housing. So we all need to work together to figure out how we can improve our housing dynamics here. We need to figure out how we can make it attractive for millennials to come here. Millennials are really interested in several things, but one of them is outdoor recreation opportunities. What am I getting ready to say? Trails. We had a person at one of our, one of our council meetings says, we have too many parks. I almost had a, my six heart attack. We have too many parks? That's interesting. That's why people come to areas. They want those spaces to go out and recreate. So when we look at building a trail system through an area where there is development right now, millennials will more apt to buy a house in Riley. Maybe remodel that house, renovate it, tear it down, build a new one. They're gonna invest within our community. They're gonna find one of the ten home builders that we have in Beagle County, and they're gonna go to a local bank. They're gonna get a mortgage for two hundred sixty thousand dollars, and they're gonna build a nice house. Kinda see how this all comes together. I need to stay on track. See what I did there? Okay, let's go to the next one. I know I'm going too long, and I was gonna go quick. Are we doing crime? I don't wanna talk about crime. You guys wanna talk about crime? No, let's just knock out some stats real quick. Our current jail capacity is two sixty-eight. Chris Tashon, do you ever heard of building a new one? That'll be opened up in July. We can't tell you the date. Total emissions for twenty twenty-one, four thousand one hundred forty people were arrested, thrown in jail. Three thousand fifty-three were males, one thousand eighty-seven were females. In twenty twenty-one, four thousand one hundred thirty people were released. If you fit those numbers together, they're almost the exact same thing. That means somebody was arrested, somebody was released in the same time period. But you know, here's the thing to think about. Over four thousand people. Most of them are community members, were in jail in twenty twenty-one. Can I stop there? Are you okay with that? Do you want more depressing data? Average length of stay is forty-one days. Seventy-two days for felons, eleven days for misdemeanors. If you want more facts, I'll email to you. Okay. I went longer than I planned on my. I know it's popping, so I brought everybody down. First annual event.
A couple of things. As you can tell, I've had a couple of commissioners that are on the ball and were planning and were working forward as hard as we can. One of the things that I can bring to that sometimes with being on the county council for several years and budget planning, and I can figure out where to put some money one way or another to make some of these things happen. So I'd like to thank Great Dane for being our sponsor. I'm intimately familiar with their product. They make the best product in the world. And I'd like to thank you for that, and if that continued investment in your facility up there. Got to meet your president at the revamp of your, and reopening of your fabrication area, and he said, call me if you need something. Gave me his business card, so I have Mr. Bill Crown's business card. So I thought that was pretty cool. He's a nice guy. So these are pretty general. I'm not quite as specific as our other two commissioners. This Riley Trail Spur came up about February, I think it was last year, abandonment notice comes, everything comes, everything winds up in county in the commissioner's office. It's kind of an interesting office. If there's some kind of problem and it can't be solved in that place else, it winds up in the commissioner's office. It may not necessarily be our job, but we always manage it. Or we use our resources and our different, different offices, you know, to work through those problems. But that's where a lot of them wind up, and thank God there's three of us who, one of us can, it usually only takes one of us to manage it. But we can be often doing those things, and that's kind of an underlying thing that you get with your community. Anyway, this came up and I have been involved in trail buildings, and Heritage Trail was built. And the intricacies of it, member of the National Organization Rails for Trails, read all their data and what have you, and I kinda had my eye on some different things around the county. We've been planning some other things, but the point of it is, is this came up, it was not a plan, but we seized upon it, and it's, it's a, it's a unique opportunity. I think that's where some confusion comes in. This just doesn't happen everywhere. And so, so there's some confusion over it. And the, but the specifics of how it can be handled and how it is handled. And again, it's just like with the recovery act money. We've been in negotiations with the railroad for several months, and they've changed a couple of things. And really, I don't know what you, they've been very good with this, but I don't know what you call it, negotiations. The railroad kind of does what it wants to do. And, and we can accept that, but they have been quite pretty and very helpful. I tried to get it for a dollar. I wanted two hundred fifty thousand dollars. I can't get up to that. So, well, I'm so, I am something, but it's your money. It's our money. I don't, I don't mean to be frivolous. So anyway, this is a unique, unique opportunity that's done all over the country every day. It's not something that can't be done, and so appreciate your support on that. Okay, winter highway success. One of the things that, I don't get too shook up about things normally. Been in business a long time. It scared me to death about winter highway problems. The last two winters with, with the equipment that we've had and the people we've had and the training we've gone into, I can't say enough about our highway department. They have just done a job for people, for the few people. They've, they've just done a great job. It's been, it's been a real team effort. Previous commissioners would upgrade this equipment and what have you. And it's, and they've had, I believe we've had, had a great, great success. Spring Hill Road Project, again, one of those things that we have been planning this for quite a while. We let it out the bid, then couldn't get it constructed because it was over, it wasn't well enough. And so we had to go back, then to let, so it got delayed another year, actually. We were gonna go, we're gonna start on last year. And these are the kind of things that frustrate me as a business person, as being in government, and it's just part of the job. It's what we have to work through. And so we realigned it, and it went out. It's in there, it's in the pipeline now, finally being constructed. We just drove down there and they're changing the gas line around. Anyway, moving on. Future of the county jail, we've had, I've got, I don't know how many departments of county government, I got every one of them that wants to remodel the county jail, the old county jail, move in there. So we have a lot of ideas, but we're getting, we're getting a study right now to IDZL to see what we really have there, what kind of facility we have there, and what we can do with it, if there's anything we can do with. Primary concern for all three of us is, is our dispatches there, and we'll be located there, and we do not have an alternative location for that at this time. So that's the one key that it's priority for us right now, to make sure that it's kind of important that just nine-one-one dispatch work every day, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And I would congratulate them. They are great people. They, I mean, you can't imagine. Anyway, so Intermodal Regional Airport. I get my foot. I'm on the board out there this year, and they're really doing some great things. They have been presented with some opportunities that, they have some more federal money coming in now than they did as what city does, county does, well, the airport has as well. And so they're doing some, they're doing some planning, but they, and they're in a program of outreach to bring things into the community right now. And I'm not an airport person, but you know, they talk about square footage of concrete, and they talk about length of runway, and they talk about overlay for the usage of the runway for different types of planes. And it's pretty interesting, and there's, they're, they're very good at marketing what people around airports want. And, and they're, they're doing that every day. They're talking to some people. Some of the air guard facilities, we're going to have to take over, and, but there's, there's a real asset there, that people, and there's an asset there that people around the country are looking for. And, and they are aggressively pursuing those things. So I think that's about it for me.
So let's get to some good things here. Convention Center. I don't know if you guys have a chance to go through it. It is an amazing facility. We have a great general manager, it's Neil Warner. She came from, in M State, I can't remember if it's Mississippi or Missouri. Somewhere around there, but she moved her whole family here. She's now Tarahoe resident. She's done a phenomenal job of introducing the convention centers to the community. She's booked a half million dollars worth of events since April. So she's doing a great job. Along with hotels that come, you know, downtown. I think that place is just gonna explode over the next two or three years, and it's really gonna be a staple in downtown Tarahoe for several years. Everybody's interested in the casino. I think everybody I talked to in here earlier this morning has asked me about the casino. I had the opportunity to talk to Betsy, Chris, and talked to Betsy as well. It was like, we're looking for mid-June groundbreaking. Everything is still on target. The casino is gonna happen. FAA regulations and things like that, then we get the okay since it's being so closely here for. They have changed how the casino sits. It's now gonna be facing west, which will allow your one hundred and twenty-five foot building to be seen better from the interstate, which is great for Tarahoe and Beagle County. We want people driving by to see that building. But Churchill has been fantastic to work with. And we're really looking forward to them coming to the community. Capital Improvement Board. Where do we go next? So the last project was Convention Center. You know, I wanna touch on how the funding happened for the Convention Center. It was the city of Tarahoe, Beagle County, Commission of Visitors Bureau, redevelopment all came together, and we make a one-time payment for that building once a year. Important thing to remember is student beverage money can only be used for tourism or arts-related things in Beagle County. And that has a sunset, which I believe is in twenty thirty-eight, or something like that. So I think it was twenty-two years that we had that tax available to us. That tax brings in about two hundred thousand dollars a month, and has consistently gone up as well, so Beagle County eats out a lot, obviously. People can visit. So you know, there are several projects we're looking at next, but I think we wanna see how the Convention Center does for a limited time before we move on to the next project to make sure the funding is there, to make sure that building does last. Success of the mill. If I can real quick, how many people have been to the concert at the mill? Oh my gosh, we gotta do better. Rachel Molinix, you've never been to the mill? So Tim had sixty thousand visitors in his first year. Sixty thousand people at the old IP property, Bulling River. Who would have ever thought that? I mean, that's incredible. You got Jump Party coming this year. Lower item for all you young, young people. It's just getting bigger. Winter Skinner, yeah. I think it's important that we all, you know, try to at least go to a concert, get to experience that, get to tell our friends about how great the mill is. I've been to every concert so far. Everything is great. The facility is great. Everybody that works is so friendly and nice. It's a lot of ISU college students that are working, basketball players, football players. Things like that. So you know, how do we make them more successful? I know Tim is having some issues regarding financing to do more because the firm releases the property off of us. So can the county or city redevelopment commission do a little bit to get him some utilities and stuff in there? I think those are things we're gonna look at in the future. Other community plan, CU and Tarahoe twenty twenty-five. I touched on this at the Convention Center. I was in Virginia camping with my family, and somebody saw an Indiana license plate, and asked where I was from. I told Tarahoe, actually, West Tarahoe, and, oh, that's where Larry Bird played. Yeah, it is. So I think it's kind of crazy, you know, I'm only in Virginia, we have Larry Bird Museum coming. I think people will travel from Boston, people will travel from, especially all around Midwest, to see the Larry Bird Museum. The tourism is a huge part of the community plan. So the CU and Tarahoe Community Plan is still holding strong, thanks to Chris and the chamber, and several other peoples, people in the community. That plan is being implemented. They meet regularly. We always get an updated chamber meetings and things like that. So I'm excited about that plan. And last but not least, the comprehensive capital improvement plan. So every plan in city or municipal government, county government, is a capital improvement plan. This one specifically is for roads, bridges, drainage. So if we have eight hundred and twenty-six miles of roads, that means we have over sixteen hundred miles of drainage, culvert pipes, ditches, along our roadways. We can do better than what we're doing, and we're going to. Larry has implemented a great plan. We have a road rating program, we have a disrating program. All those things are coming together. So a lot of times we'll get phone calls every day, why won't you come fix our road right now? The common thing we say is, we have a plan in place, and we'll get to it as soon as we can. But if we are to pull our guys off of everything that they are supposed to be doing, nothing will ever get done. So it's important that we're following the plan. Our highway guys are great. Mike touched on the success of Winter. I'll tell you why. Our highway guys are some of the best. Men and women, the women dispatchers and stuff like that, they do a great job. Our roads are more clear than I would say any other county that touches us, and our kids are going to school a lot more, which sometimes they get mad at us about that, but that's okay. But, so we're looking to, Larry's gonna be putting on RFQ for capital improvement plans, so we'll get somewhere more with that. We can do something over the next five years to plan better for roads and drainage and things like that. So overall, I think Beagle County is a great place. We have several good things going. I truly believe we're a destination city for west-central Indiana. We're certainly the regional hub. Everything kind of flows through Tarahoe. We're doing everything right, the things that tackle just housing, workforce development, workforce attraction. You know, why are some of these places in the industrial park having to hire out of county? I think we need to get to some root issues, some root causes, to find out why those things are happening. And getting to work with our four universities and everyone else to get people hireable, more desirable, and things like that. So Beagle County is a good place, and I look forward to the future. You know, we're all pretty grateful to be able to work for you guys. Our goal is always open. And last but not least, if anybody wants to go through a jail tour, we have Tim there before we can know all our new jail tours. So Brandon has gotten really good at that. He'd be happy to take you through the jail. Anytime you want. Just, just reach out to us. It's your project. It's the county's biggest project ever. So if you'd like to go through there, we'd be happy to take you through. So with that, Kristen? Any questions? Steve?
Yeah, Chris, I, first of all, I wanna thank all of you for having us today. To be a part of this, and it's really neat just to see the comprehensive, like, bring some pride to the community. Thank you. I hope you do have a second email or a second whatever you're calling it. I find it very beneficial. I'd also thank you three for working so collaboratively with other governmental officials and legislative leaders and funding sources. It's obvious you've done a great deal of really good things, and I think there's no metaphor in the, in the community because of that, so thank you for that. When I first came, I didn't hear that as much. That's a pleasure of coming to this community, but I do so much of that now. One question, I saw you kind of took on the jail, but I'm just wondering about the mental health issue that's got in our community. I saw a little bit about that at first, but I don't know if you'd just speak to that from a resource or a free seat that going to help and assist with that issue of that.
Thank you, Steve. Appreciate those kind of words, too. Hamilton Centers are CMHC, Community Mental Health Care Provider. I think we need to get more people involved outside of Hamilton Center. I don't know if you like Next Step, the Truman House, other local organizations. How can we get them funding? Right now, the county pays nearly seven hundred thousand dollars to Hamilton Center for their services, but they're so far behind. At first, they get sentenced to jail for thirty days or forty days, and then their sentencing is then a Hamilton Center program. But if they can't get to them for another thirty or forty days, they are already recommitting another crime. So including other local recovery services would be important, and I think we have room in our jail to do that. So that's what we're looking for to do. Yeah, two thousand eighteen or nineteen, Beagle County Council, working with commissioners, invested, what was it? Eight hundred thousand dollars, eight hundred thousand dollars a year for dual diagnosis program, community corrections. So when you come in, they first get you a state provided health insurance, and then you meet with a psychiatrist, and they will, you know, diagnose you if you have a mental health issue. We can hopefully get you medicated and help with some of that, or if you have a drug issue, we'll hopefully get you programmed, or into a program to get help you with that. So we are taking steps, but it's, you know, it's, it's tough. I mean, for people that have mental issues or are addicted to drugs, it usually has to happen three or four times before they finally get rock bottom. Think, man, I really have a family that I gotta care for, or family that cares for me, and you know, you wanna change your life, so reducing recidivism is a big thing. Ask the other question. Perhaps the other question. Way too.
I I too, I agree with everything that Steve said and you have been so collaboratively, collaboratively working with the city. With non-profit organizations, Turn the River is a wonderful project. You know, you you're you're really putting us in a position where we have some true community jewels. That will be helpful in attracting individuals to move into our community. And in order to to help break new businesses and other professionals wanting to work here. One of the things our community just failed on was the school referendum. And I don't know of many businesses who want to move into an area or individuals who want to move into an area. If there is not a perception that the school corporation is moving forward. Have you reached out to the school corporation to see how you can plan your political support, your political leverage? To help us move forward, to get the kind of schools here that provide the healthcare workers we need. That provide the manufacturing workers we need and that provide the professionals we want to come in here to fill up. Obviously, we're attracted, we're, uh we're now growing, excuse me, we're growing in areas of healthcare workers. And also in terms of hospitality workers, but we are decreasing with regard to manufacturing. Um IT engineers, things like that, we need to make certain that we are able to attract those people. Engineers, et cetera, to come here and bring their children here to benefit them.
I'm gonna hold on, Brendan answers real quick, I just want to touch on, I got to meet with two families, one from Knox County, one from Banburg County, I think I told Kristen about this. They're both looking to move here, one's to be employed at Great Dane and the other one was to be employed at Still Dynamics. Still Dynamics in Great Dane are offering wages well above what normal Beale County people make. Uh the first things they asked me after we had lunch at Federal Coffee Company was, your schools, how are they? Quality of lives, colleges and things like that, so I think, you know, schools. They both were young families in their thirties, uh one had a five-year-old, the other one had a nine-year-old, and they want to know what their future looks like. They weren't dwelling on the past of our school corporation, they do because they're moving here for their future. So I have no shame in saying I was a yes though uh for the referendum. Now I got a five and nine-year-old, we're gonna go to the school system, so I want it to be the best that it can be, so Brendan.
So, I'm up for reelection, and I'm not turning this into a reelection speech, but that, you know, you know how I am, we've been together for a long time, so. That that's how I'm setting this up, at a candidate's forum, I think it was probably ten or twelve of us on stage, somebody got up and says. Uh how are you gonna vote on the referendum? Nobody would get up, and so I stood up and I said, I'll commit political suicide. I walked up and I said, I'm voting for it, and I voted for it based off my wife and I sitting down, realizing that we have a nine-year-old. That if this project was for, she'll be at high school age at the time that the schools should be, or where we would like it to be. We did the math, it was on cost us between two and three hundred dollars more a year, we're okay with that, it's the same exercise we did in the last referendum. But as I shared at that group, I said I also recognize that we are in a impoverished community. If Richard Poynack was here, he could talk about the Alice Program, Beth, you and I, that are quality of life. Things that we have once a month or however often, I tried to hit most of them, we talked about the importance of moving our community forward. I I don't want to keep going back to the trail that I need to. Those are the programs that attract the people like Chris just mentioned, it's not that ninety thousand more a year job, they're everywhere. We travel, a lot of you in here travel, one of my favorite places to go to has been Bill Arkansas, who's been there. It's awesome, we went to the museum there, um Crystal Palace, the crystal, crystal one. Forget what it's called, so it's it's the world's largest private art collection. Um that was our goal, we wanted to go there, take our daughter there, see the art collection, while we were there. We woke up, we stealth camp, which means we illegally parked our motorhome in a lot, uh woke up that morning, on a Sunday morning, surrounded by hundreds of cars. We thought it was a park, what we didn't realize was that that Sunday morning, they were having soccer, on a Sunday morning. We couldn't get our motorhome out because there's so many cars there, Menville has so many outdoor activities, it's a mountain bike capital United States. People go there because of their parks, you know, one of the things when somebody's running for office, it's the tired, boring rhetoric. We're gonna create more jobs, we need more jobs, I'll be the first to tell you, we're not creating more jobs. Those jobs will be created when we become a community of yes, and I think right now, we're we're kind of in that community of no phase. Those those loud voices, trail projects, if it's easy to do, do it, knock it out, we have too many parks, now we don't, we need more. I'm going on the river this afternoon, that's my happy place, at noon, I'm gonna have my video on, I'm gonna do a Facebook Live video of me going up the river. Over a thousand people will probably watch that, isn't that unreal? Our Wild Bash River, and we talk about how underutilized it is, well, it's not, I'm okay with a lot of people not being honest, because you might, my solitude. We talk about development, turn the river along the river, there are no places to develop, with the exception of the commercial salvage property. I understand there's some possible changes there where there may be an opportunities to develop along the river, but there's environmental, environmental issues. The commissioners partnered with the mill to give them a chance. I offered them a dollar a year for five years, that's how that started, the three of us now are, the ball's in our court to continue that. What a great thing, people will come here to go see a concert. Beth, these are the things, I'm answering this in in a weird way, the referendum failed, the referendum failed because we're grumpy. We don't trust in a lot of things right now and a lot of people voted no, and you can be a political scientist and you realize the people that you thought would vote for it. Did not vote for it, teachers didn't vote for it. Um so that kind of says something, so yes, have we reached out to school corporation collectively? No. I talked to Hayward uh a lot, Chris does, I'm not sure if Mike does or not, they'll have to answer that, but we are engaged, we do work together. Collaboration is really blowing people away, they expect the three of us, they expect the two of us, or one of the, I'm the odd one out, right? They expect us to not get along, I think that that's what people want, they don't want to see us work well with the mayor because that's, it hasn't occurred before. But we work with everybody as much as possible, that is what's gonna move the county forward. Get rid of the partisanship, work together to find out what is right for the common good, not the individual. Pay of all those roads, look at Willis, Indiana, invest where we can, so maybe next time, Beth, when those votes come up, people look at it differently. Versus just, it's gonna cost me two hundred bucks a year, what will that two hundred bucks a year do more than just the schools? How will it bring in other companies, so education, Mr. Holman, we're already, you're back there. When you and I, well, I left Union before you came on board, one of the biggest challenges that we had, and I'm sorry, you even lectured me afterwards. On recruiting positions was, number one, schools. If our, they didn't feel our, is that, are we still there? If our schools, if the physician comes in and she says, you know what, these schools aren't good enough for my kids. That physician's gonna go somewhere else, they're gonna go to Menville, Arkansas, so that was the kick for me, it put me in a funk that it didn't pass. Because, not that it didn't pass, but the margin was so strong, I figured it'd be a forty-nine fifty-one either way. But that big, that's an eye-opener for all of us, all of us in this room. As the elected officials, so you guys put in office to make this county better, make this community better, we do have work to do, so. I don't know, I'm doing my typical rant, so this is, Chris is getting back to pulling away, I I know Mike wanted to say something too, though. Or not, oh yes, it's okay Josh, we're taking over, we're still in leadership right now.
You you touched on community corrections, what have you known, and and we've got one of those jewels too with with Mr. Bill Watson. At our, that runs our center and and he approached us on the uh. Possibility of treatment for some of these people coming out of jail uh in a timely manner. And uh it seemed like they were struggling with getting appointment for thirty days. Uh after they were released from jail for mental health treatment and uh. Like it took about three days and they were back in jail for another offense, and he approached us with this uh program. And uh had it uh sketched out where to get revenue and uh how it would work and uh. He he put it together and and at the council at the time, we we funded it. And again, it was about eight hundred thousand dollars and it keeps about uh twenty people out of jail daily. So you guys do the math, was it a good investment or not? I I I think it was, he's working on thirty, maybe as many as forty, so you know, these are the kinds of things that we've done. And that we are doing and uh you know, uh when we used to argue that jail, uh we. They say, well, it's gonna be filled, uh as soon as you build it, it's gonna, you know, well, what we've been working on is trying to keep people out of jail. And and that's not to keep people not safe in the community, that's not it at all, but I'm just telling you about a program that works. It it was uh and and it did take, took some direction that changed some money from one direction to another. And uh and doing things a little differently and I I believe it did a great success now. You know, is are we gonna get another group? Well, no, there's some, there's some bad people in that jail and that's where they need to be. So there's certain bound hoes that we're never gonna get treatment for, whatever, but I just wanted to expand on that.
Yep.
Are you considering expanding community corrections into the old jail, that makes a lot of sense.
Um there's a couple of ideas that we've got on the on the jail, um I talked to a previous county commissioner from another county. And and he's with a engineering firm right now, he threw some ideas out on some things that we might be able to do. Uh not quite the community corrections, um I had, Bill hasn't said anything about needing more space there right now.
Any other questions?
Well, if there's no other questions, Josh is gonna wrap things up, but I did forget to thank one person, she's gonna kill me for doing this. But Tammy York Allen is with us this morning and as many of you know, Tammy is working very hard behind the scenes to keep these three in line. Can I say that without doing anything to her on me, so Tammy, thank you for your note.
I'd just like to thank the commissioners for taking the time today, uh so let's give them one more round of applause. If you'd like more information about the, some of the programs mentioned, including the CU Intermodal Community Plan, uh the Chamber does have. A monthly newsletter that continues to up update the information and progress that we're making here at the Chamber. Um so um if you'd like to get out of that newsletter, definitely let me know. Um also, we distribute other newsletters and notices for the Chamber, so nothing that will fill your inbox. Um but if you're not getting them, uh we'll be happy to to add you to those. I did want to give a quick plug to the community census that the Community Plan ran a couple of weeks ago. If you haven't filled that out yet, um there should be flyers out there on your table that has a QR code that you can take that. Really looking to measure community sentiment so we can track um progress among some of our different residents and visitors and students. We've had about a thousand people take that so far, which I think is really good, so we're excited to dive into the data and share that with the community, which we plan to do. Um around the end of June, and lastly, I did want to give one other quick plug for our health and wellness task force. Um we're pursuing a state designation called Indiana Healthy Communities and it'll provide the community with a healthy action plan. Um for Terre Haute Beale County, we're wanting to involve not just those that are currently on the task force, but a lot of you in the room here. As well, who maybe aren't officially part of the task force but have different touchpoints into um that focus. So Monday, we're gonna have a virtual Zoom that will walk through what this process entails and give some information on how you can get involved. So if you would like to be part of that, it's a pretty short time commitment, let me know, I'll get you added to the list, some of you will probably get personal invites from me later today as well on that. Um so thank you all again, thank you to the commissioners and we appreciate you having it up, coming out, and enjoy the rest of your Friday, thank you.